Good morning. We'll open our Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on this day, Wednesday, November 12th, 2025. We begin our meeting with the pledge. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
All support? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion to approve the agenda. Move on to public comment period. I see nobody in our audience. So we're quiet there. Have commissioners received any comments?
No, Brooke might want to say something about being pulled away, but...
No, I'm good.
Alright.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda items. We have claims and we have minutes from the October 28th meeting. Ski North Ultra's special road use permits. 2026 Superior Spring Trail Race. 2026 Superior Fall Trail Race. And we have a donation. And then we have Natural Resources Block Grant Agreement and approve the retirement of Daniel Burgland.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Make motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. We have a motion and a second to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes there. Moving on to a public hearing by Brady.
So that will be at nine o'clock.
And so we'll move along and when it gets to be nine o'clock, we'll pause and go into that. And so we have some changes for the sheriff to discuss with us, but he's not quite here yet.
Yes, Madam Chair. Just sent him a message to see when he intends on being here.
Okay. We'll put that on hold. And go on to then Brady talking about airport maintenance and operation grant.
Madam Chair? Do you think we might want to deal with the maintenance as long as Brooke is here and then he could go?
Then we could let him go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners? As was added to the agenda, the amendment to the initial contract. And it's the standard AIA amendment. And what it talks about is the cost of work in section...
Excuse me? Could you please explain what AIA is and it's the architectural?
Yeah, AIA is our standard contracts we use for government work.
Just so people understand with whom we're having a contract.
And we have a contract with BKV Group, which we went into in October of 2024.
And they are the architects.
Yep, they're the architects for design of the LEC addition and the additional work we added on. So with the AIA document, they're asking for a increase of $200,000. And it goes, it references section 11-1-2. Which, when you go to the original contract for 11-1-2, it is 11 and 1/4% of the owner's budget for the cost of the work, as calculated in accordance with section 11.6. The base fee shall be not less than $650,321, based upon the initial owner's budget identified in section 1-1-3. That was our initial budget that was set by AMP, which was the estimate of cost of the project. Adjustment to the compensation will be based upon the construction manager's estimate at the conclusion of the design development phase when the project's final scope is more defined. So basically what happened was, we had the initial fee, the 11.25%, and that was based on the estimates of cost. So per the contract we signed initially, once we further defined the scope and then got the actual cost from the construction manager at risk, they were entitled to the additional 11.25% on the additional work of 2.633 million. So basically, with the contract we signed at first, we would owe them $296,229. We had a meeting with BKV. They came in at, they said they decreased their fees to 9%, which brought us to $236,982. And basically, we requested if we could make it an even $200,000 to drop it to a final percentage rate of 7.6%. Yeah, we asked nicely, they agreed, you know? Doesn't hurt if you don't ask, so. Any questions on that?
Mr. Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Brooke. So, as simple as I can state this, as I understand it, that if you take a project that's five point something or other million initially, that that falls in that bracket with 11.25 whatever percent based upon the contract.
Yep.
When the actual with the scope of the project expanding, then it was a reduced by contract, a reduced rate, not the 11.25, but you said the 9.
No, it wasn't reduced by contract. We were supposed to pay them 11.25%, which was the $296,000. That's what the contract stated.
Yeah, and for some reason, I, and I've got this wrong then, because if I take the scope of the work, which is the five something or other million initially, times that 11.25, that doesn't come out to that figure. That's where...
What figure? The 600, 655,000? That's what we've already paid BKV, was that initial 655,000, which was the 11.25%.
This is just the percentage on the amendment, on the addition?
Yeah, so it's the calculation then here, because I get the 655,000, yeah. Because it ends up being actually cheaper at the 7.6% times that figure than it is at, given the total cost and scope of the work. It's cheaper than it would be at the 11.25.
Oh, much cheaper, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We just negotiated down that additional 200, 2,633,000. That was the only figure we were adjusting the percentage rate on.
So for public awareness, that on the project initially, we look at it best estimate of what we figure it's going to be. And then as we continue through the process, we find that the scope expands, given the nature of what we're going to have to do. So to finish the project, we have to continually go back to the agreement in the contract. And the agreement specifies what that pay will be for them, you know, facilitating this.
Yep.
And so it came out because of the final scope of the project at a higher number, which often does. And so then the contract specifies that we get a lower rate, which is 9, but then we negotiated to get to the 7.6, so it reduced it. So the stewardship of that project on behalf of you and whatever is, demonstrates that trying to save money but be in compliance with the contract agreement.
Correct, correct.
Commissioner White?
That all goes to relationships. It's because you're a swell guy and work well with people. But my question is, the scope of work, is that labor and/or material costs?
So it's both. So the scope of work, the increase of 2.6 million, we added about a million two in scope, which was accelerating the deferred maintenance, which was the spreadsheet I sent you with the boilers and the piping and ceiling grid and carpet and all of that. And then the other million dollars plus is just how far off that initial estimate was from AMP to what actual costs are that were secured by Johnson Wilson Constructors.
And do you anticipate that there might be more, more costs added or subtracted as you go along? I mean, will there be more?
Not from BKV. This will be the final payment to BKV unless we do additional work on other projects.
And BKV is not responsible. It's our construction manager, management company that will cover any... Do they cover cost over once, would say, copper wiring goes up and the electrician's, electrical company says, oh, it's going to be an additional $10,000. Who eats that cost?
That will be Johnson Wilson. As long as we don't change the scope at this point and don't have change orders that will affect our bottom line, the number stays the same.
Okay.
The only time that number will change is if it's change orders that are approved. You know, either we're adding scope or, I mean, as the, as the scope at the transfer station has gone, we're taking scope away from Johnson Wilson and Dustin is, is basically generaling certain portions, like the septic and this, that, and the other. So then we actually are getting a gain back from Johnson Wilson because of, they lose their 4% on top of that.
Thanks, thanks for telling the public.
Yep, no problem. And, oh, and I wanted to address something you brought up in email, Deb. We had CRBPS do the very large evaluation of all our facilities, which is a living document and continues to go on. So as we accelerate the CIP in the LEC project.
CIP.
The Capital Improvement Plan in the Law Enforcement Center project, we update that as the, as the projects get completed and as the additional work gets completed. Just like we're doing with like the boiler project in the basement. That was on the capital improvement plan, so that has been updated. The lighting, dishwasher, things that are going on in the community center, YMCA, Highway Department, all those things get updated so that, that document is living and keeps getting updated.
So there's an recap, there's an up to the, up to date spreadsheet, tracking work done and money spent?
Yes.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So reviewing and looking at our facilities and assessing, you know, what we need to do to upgrade, maintain, whatever, and then allocating a certain amount to that. When we look at the budget, we don't, we don't necessarily see that allocated per department.
No, we haven't done, we haven't done it that way yet.
Yeah, and, and it would be beneficial in, in the budget if we see that. We can have the master plan that shows it with the overall cost, but then distributing that to department would be beneficial. So when we look at the financial, you know, cost for that department, we're seeing our allocation to capital improvement.
Right.
And we have equipment that might be in there and things, but things that pertain to facility aren't there? And it'd be beneficial actually if we could see that by department.
Yep, I'm working on that for the 2026 budget. It's a very large project and it hasn't been implemented before, I believe, because it's a pretty scary number. You know, if I budget it that way like MIS does, because we're so far behind, that, that number is going to be extremely large.
And...
And that's why they were bonding for it. I mean, that's why they were taking out big chunks like that, because it would be such a hit to the levy all at once.
Yeah, and if we're bonding and, and when we're looking for bonding and we include other smaller projects under the major focus, I mean, it gets lost from the standpoint of analysis, you know, for commissioners unless we ask that question, understand that when we're making those decisions. But give you an example, that if, if the community center has looked at what they figure they need for replacement things, for everything that's under the umbrella of community center, and they come to us and say, we figure we need an allocation of $76,000 this year that goes to those replacement costs, then when we see that in their budget.
Yep.
We, we know that and understand that. That's why it'd be beneficial if we did see that. And I appreciate the work involved, but it is, it is more evidence-based when we're looking at real numbers departmentally.
And when, when Sarah and I did that community center budget, we did not include the interior items that need to be replaced because in the capital improvement plan bonding, there was $560,000 in that bond. That's only for community center bond. So all of the, all the items that need replacement on the inside, we didn't include in that $76,000 because we'll be able to take care of a lot of that with that $560-some thousand that we, that was already bonded for.
Yeah. Does it make sense in, in this, looking at this and how we disseminate information, that there would be a ceiling at which anything that is under this amount here can fall into a certain category as opposed to anything that's beyond that, it has to go to this capital? It's like depreciation.
Yeah, it was, it was 5,000 and then that was recently moved to 10,000, I believe, right Brady? For capex for depreciation.
Is that what you're talking about? When it comes to the board?
Yeah, when, when we're, well...
Or are you talking larger?
When we're looking at the budget standpoint, in other words, what informs where we place different things. Ultimately, what we want is we want to see the costs for each department relative to, if it's capital equipment and what's reflected in the budget will fall on this, but if it's capital improvement replacement, which are larger items, exceed the 10,000, it'll fall in this category. And you might say, well, you're going to have to look at our, our, you know, depreciation schedule, master plan. But what I'm saying, it'd be nice if we could see that with the understanding of how these things are allocated within a department's budget. If that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, I think that makes sense. Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it basically comes back to kind of the way you were breaking it down beforehand, just how we're going to allocate funds within the budget on a replacement schedule.
Yeah, and when we're, when we're saying, when we go through the budget process as commissioners, it's a matter of saying, well, we're looking at this and, and this is what our plan is, this is the recommendation. We've looked at the boilers over at the community center for years and it's been patchwork and this and that, the other. And some of it is because of budget decisions and, and that's primarily, you know, what drives that. So I appreciate the conversation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Administrator trouble?
Madam Chair, I would just like to thank Brooke for his work on this because he was able to save the county significant funds by negotiating that rate down.
Yeah.
We appreciate it for sure. Thank you.
And I would like to thank Brooke for answering emails yesterday on a holiday. I mean, and that's, he came with all the answers that were being asked.
You get basic answers.
Look, you're not in a hole yet, but keep talking.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to approve the amendment or make a motion to approve the amendment for professional services agreement with BKV.
Support.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thanks, Brooke.
Okay, so now we're going to hear from Patty Liasson, who's going to talk about setting up a public comment period for body camera. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. So I would like to request a public hearing for our Body Cam program, which we would like to get up and running. We have finally finished the policy. Myself and the county attorney went back and forth quite a bit and we finally have that nailed down. And I believe it's posted now or not yet?
It was attached to the agenda.
Okay, okay. It will be, it will be posted on the county's website for the public to review. And so yes, I would like to set or ask you to set a public hearing for the, is it the November 25th meeting? So I would give the public two weeks to look at the policy if they, if they like. Two weeks to make any comments or responses. My email will be attached to that, to that. So if the public has comments or questions or anything, they can email me and I will answer all the emails that come in. And I will also collect all of them and present them to you at that meeting.
Questions or comments to Pat? I would say that this has been kind of rumbling along for about the last year and I'm glad that it's finally coming forward now for your safety and the department.
Yes, it's been, it's been quite a while. We've been working on this. So yes, we're almost at the finish line and we hope to get it through.
Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Pat. Part of this discussion might preceded me coming in, in this term here. But when I'm looking at this body worn cameras, given the importance of being able to back up what in fact is taking place, is, is an important element that's driven this. It tends to be more urban areas than it tends to be, you know, smaller communities. And there was a committee of the whole, if I was in attendance at that committee of whole, I maybe missed it. But what I'm wondering is, given the, the costs, the policy's been put in place, the projected costs based upon what we know in our application here in Cook County, including the data storage and program management, which are significant factors. I'm just wondering, it'd be good for the public to know and maybe you've made it available. But if you're making the policy available, would it also be good to put the projected costs and make that available?
We can add that, yeah. I don't know.
Part of that is, again, it's, it's the initial cost to set up and then it is the data storage and it's the maintenance moving forward. And I think those figures relative to, here's the policy, how it operates, and here's costs in association with it would be beneficial.
I can present those at the, at the meeting, absolutely. I can bring, bring that, I mean, I'll get it to you, of course, first, firsthand, and then I can, we can discuss that at the, at the, at the public hearing.
Okay.
The cost would be something that would be within your budget, I believe?
Correct.
The maintenance in the future then would have to be considered. How often do you have to maintain a piece of equipment like that?
It would be considered. We also have a technology line item in our budget that we, we put money into each year that would be used for this purpose as well.
Yeah, and I think that's beneficial, Madam Chair, Pat, that, that that line item on our budget, constantly the department's evaluating where it might be best spent to meet need. But I think that's an important component of that, for the public to have a discussion prior to coming to the public meeting if they have any concerns or ask about that.
Sure.
If it's something that's bid, when you're looking or you're working with, rolling on any of this from a technology standpoint, whether you are or not, it just, I think, anything that reinforces the stewardship in this process would be beneficial.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to set a date for public comment for Tuesday, November 25th, at the county board meeting at 9:00 AM.
Support.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Was it Ski Hill or was it?
It was a, it was a, it was a pretty significant accident, let's put it that way.
Oh, dear. Take care then. Okay, well, we're about five minutes before our public hearing. We can move on to Brady and airport maintenance?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a renewal of the biannual maintenance and operations state grant for the airport. And this will cover 2026 and 2027. The amount of revenue is up just slightly. It's been 82,000 recently. Now it's up to 83,263. That's over two years. And this covers a good share of regular maintenance costs at the airport. The grant covers 75% of eligible costs.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the airport maintenance and operation grant contract.
Support. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you on that.
And we can start on the quarter three general fund budget actual report. And this is quarter three of 2025, so it's 75% of the year. If things were perfect in the world, we would have 75% of our revenues and 75% of our expenses. In fact, we've received 71, this is of our budgeted costs and revenues. So 91% of our budgeted revenues we've received already. Mostly that's because of state and federal PIL payments that have already been paid and our interest revenue. And our expenses are at 67% of budgeted, so less than 75% to this date. So to go down the list, I've highlighted some of the major differences. You may want to ask questions about others. And I'll just mention the ones that I've pointed out here. I've adjusted some of these since this was published, so I've gone back and edited a few things. But first of all, the general finance, that's Department 41. You'll see that highlighted at 193%. That's because our interest rates continue to remain strong at just over 4%. This is the third year in a row that rates have not gone down significantly. They are starting, they're trending that way now with changes by the Federal Reserve, but still strong. This gives you some flexibility in budgeting, of course, because it's over budgeted because we have not budgeted the high numbers. We've budgeted about 500,000 and, and we're still far exceeding that for the year. And on the expense side in that department, we just allocate general insurance that MCIT doesn't allocate by department and we pay for it here and we pay for that in January, so that expense is already paid. In data processing, this continues a recent trend, so they get revenue. They charge Public Health Human Services for work that they do, IT work. And they're exceeding that budget, the amount of work that they put in to support IT. Some of this work is, is things that we get reimbursed for. They get reimbursed for federal money, so that's part of why we do this. It's an internal transfer, but we do get federal money.
For, to some degree. Madam Chair, if I could ask Brady while we're on that subject, so understanding that, I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's internal transfer of dollars, then it has no impact on things. But your comment relative to the fact some of this is reimbursable, so that we understand that in context, if we look at, you know, those revenues are 120, 12% because they're above. Understanding in the context what's real money, because if it increases in the amount that we're getting, the point that it, what we get that's reimbursable, that's the figure we really want to see.
It's, it's not that clear. You're not going to see a one-to-one. If we do this, we get that. We also do it with the maintenance department, charges PHHS for rent for the same reason. And if you talk with our cost allocation professionals, it's, there's a point at which you go too far. It's, there's no benefit to it. They can't, they can't tell you precisely. Charge them 30%. Charge them, they don't have, they don't have a precise number for that. But I think we're doing, they indicate that we're doing as, about as well as we can do with A87 money. You see that in my department, so.
And that's beneficial for us to understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah, just how that works. When we look at, charge back for copy or we look at mileage using, you know, county, you know, vehicles and stuff, being able to understand what that really means financially as it affects levy, that's important.
And that's just the reason we do that with those two departments. Maintenance doesn't charge any other department rent for their office. That's the only reason this one is done. And the same with IT. They don't charge any other department for their PCs or for rent. It's because we do get some revenue back.
How is it with soil and water reflected in that regard? Because we're not charging.
They don't get that kind of federal revenue that gets reimbursable on that, so there's no, there's no benefit in that way.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
We're going to pause right now, it's nine o'clock. And I'll open it up for Brady to discuss the changes in the miscellaneous fee schedule.
So, this request was just for us, one specific fee, we put it out to departments and no one else had a request for that, for a change at this point. But this one is because of the cannabis licensing and registration, the law changes this year. So, these low, this is for the low potency hemp retailers. They've been retailing products here for a while now, you'll see them, the products in stores. So, now they're under a new process. They're already licensed by the state, but they have to get new licensing, new ones do, from the state, and they have to register with the county. They've not had any registration or licensing with county before. This is the first, let's say, this is stage one of all this process for these low potency hemp retailers. So, in order to continue operating, they have to have a registration with us, and we have to set a fee, and that's what this is about. So we're setting the fee, the state says a maximum fee of one hundred and twenty-five per location for each of these retailers. And the committee is recommending, yeah, set it at the one twenty-five, that's their recommendation, so that's what you're seeing here. And there'll be more of this rolling out, I don't know how soon, but this will be rolling out for the different types of operators. Whether we'll have those operators or not, we'll still be complying with all the requirements of the state law. So, the retailers had to either register by the end of October if they were new ones, or re-up their registration, confirm it. So, this has to be, this should be done soon, just for them to, to continue to operate without stopping. They would have to stop and wait until we set a fee, had a registration or process. The registration process and application, all of that is ready, so it's just waiting for the fee approval.
Okay. Questions? Commissioner Sullivan?
I would just like to make a motion to approve the initial retail registration fee of a hundred and twenty-five dollars per location for the lower potency hemp edible retailers in Cook County, and this would be for businesses outside the city of Grand Murray.
All support?
Do we need to do anything to like officially open the public, public hearing before we take action?
Other than saying that I'm opening the public hearing?
I don't know if we need to.
I think you did.
She did say.
So we, yeah, so whether you have to close it to make a motion, ah, might be the.
Yeah, 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 I would agree, because just for the public, whether they see, whether we have an audience or not, that we are having a public hearing. Nobody is here to discuss the issue, the public hearing was opened, we closed the public hearing, and the motion has been made. And the other thing, I would just say that we are responding as a county in response to requirement defined by the state of Minnesota, so this is a compliance issue on our part.
And I should point out, too, that this is outside of the city. The city has retailers that, that they will register, they're doing the same process.
That's an important element.
And that was stated in the motion, outside the city.
It's, it's the same as the liquor licensing, too, so it kind of, kind of mirrors that.
So we have a motion and a second. Are there any further comments or questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And now we'll close the public hearing at this time at nine oh five. Okay, Brady, continue on.
Okay. So next item is the elections, that's Department 63, and this is a standard item, you see in here, because of the timing. This is the, the revenues we receive back from the hospital, the school, the city, the towns for election work, and we receive that in 2025. And so we budget, a two-year budget on this, and that's why the revenues are so high, they don't get spread. We come all at once. For the administrative department, the revenues are slightly lower than expected, and that's that contract we have with the hospital, that's Todd Ford's time, that's split. So, they'll be making that payment shortly. Same thing, basically with the attorney's office, they have a city prosecution agreement, and they get a quarterly payment, and we haven't seen the third quarter payment yet. Crime victim witness, their revenue is low, that's their state payment, it's mostly covered by a state grant, so we're just waiting on that grant payment. The recorder's office is above in revenue, and that's their technology fees. So, we budget a portion of that and expect to spend it, and it comes in faster than we're budgeting. But that is saved, it's a restricted fund.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Brady, the board had passed for some additional convenience and reduced workload relative to some of the things that can be handled in the recorder's office. I'm wondering if, if that will contribute then at all, affect this number?
No.
It's more a convenience issue.
This, it's a convenience, can you explain that more?
Are you talking about the e-recording platform?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that doesn't have any financial bearing, it just has a convenience to the public for accessibility and potentially reduces workload.
Correct. It has a slight impact on the technology fees. I believe there was a minor fee that needs to be pulled from that resource for implementation, but outside of that, it does not impact that number.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And they increased the fees, which feeds this funding and then the other funding, they have two, two different fee sources that some years ago went up a lot. I forget what the fees were at that time, but that was for e-recording. That's for all the counties around the state to go to e-recording, and not just necessarily e, but speeding up their process to get it under three days. And so that's what feeds this technology fund, and then they have a Department 101, which is a slightly different uses, but anyway, both of those are basically.
Madam Chair, Brady, is it, so, just to understand those fees, is the increase in fees reflective of more users, or is it reflective of increased cost for the use?
It's, no, this is more users. It's just that they're, they're charged more, twenty years ago, whenever this started, maybe not that long ago, to fund improvements to the recording process across the state. We're, we've actually built up these funds to some degree, we're using them for related purposes. IT is using some of the funds to help the whole recording process, which, you know, affects land services, our department, assessors, et cetera. So, we're making use of those funds now.
Yeah, and my, my question wasn't necessarily the application of those funds, it was the increased numbers, if it reflects increased usage, that more people are using the services as opposed to increase in the fees.
Well, it's been both over the years, and it'll come and go, the increased use. Up here, we had tremendous deeds and mortgage, et cetera, right around COVID and then afterwards, as people, some moved up here, some were splitting their properties, et cetera. So, I mean, we had like, I don't know, you'd have to ask Holly now, but three times, let's say, normal for a few years.
And the benefit in understanding that is when you go to the budget process, to know what influences those numbers, so that your projections are real when, when you're looking at future budgets, so.
Yeah, and this mostly is not a budget reflected item, because we don't spend all of our money, so it's not really, but it's, it, it seems like we should report some of these. It's part of her levy department, but that fee itself is not really changing their budget number, because we spend all that money and we still put some away, so. Thank you. Courthouse operations, that was, that revenue was, they got reimbursed for some log cabin roof up there. Insurance reimbursed a claim, eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And since it was spent out of his department, then that's where the revenue goes back to. Down to sheriff, the revenues are very low, that's typical this time of year. They have a, a large payment of state amortization aid that comes in December, and they get another payment, I should have asked Pat while he was here from the National Park Service, it's not a huge number, but it's mostly the state amortization aid.
Madam Chair, if I may. Ma'am Brady, I'd like to go back to veteran service officer. The state provides seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Correct.
And that figure might be five hundred dollars more than it was ten years ago in my first term. In other words, my point is that we had seven thousand, we had one veteran service officer for the county, then the state required that we had to have our, our veteran service officer at the time, and to make a decision whether he was going to serve Grand Portage or serve the county, and he made a decision to serve the county. So we had to split and have two veteran service officer, and the state was allocating seven thousand dollars for that position. And here we are in 2025 with seven thousand five hundred. That's.
That's, it's not unusual. There are a lot of programs like that, that unless they get pressure on the legislature, they don't, they won't make a change for a long, long time. And so that, that tends to push your budget up, because your budget's based on revenues and expenses, and if you're counting on a certain amount of revenue, if it doesn't rise with the costs, then that's levy.
Should build into a cost of living, because obviously we pick up the cost on that end. Thank you.
Let's see. E-911, here's another department that's really shown for information purposes, it's not a levy department, because the state provides more money than we typically spend, or ever have spent in this one. Some counties probably levy for it, because they spend all that allocation, but for us, it's been a net plus, but we show it here anyway. And the current balance in the E-911 fund is four hundred and sixty-two thousand. So that'll, that's building up and getting high, but the next time that they have to redo that, that system, you know, the E-911 system, when they do that, that's very expensive, so. And we're using, I've noticed, we're using more of that now for technology than we used to. So, the, the net difference is less than it was twenty years ago, say, when that fee went up. Radio communications, they are exceeding, this is not unusual either, their tower lease fees are exceeding what they've budgeted there. Tower Capital is here, again, for information purposes. The Tower Capital Fund is self-funding, so we're building up enough funds in Tower Capital to replace towers and make improvements, et cetera. Currently, that has five hundred and sixty-nine thousand in it. And that is one that is totally at the board's discretion. So those are committed funds, because the board has committed that for towers, rather than required by law to be there.
I will pause for a moment. Commissioner White asked, could this be on the screen? Is this screenable?
The document we're looking at.
It is.
Seven B?
Yep.
Um, you'll have to give me a minute or two.
We still love you, Gianna.
Should we keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. So county jail, they, their expenses are lower than normal, and that's, I think that's good news. That's primarily their, where they have to travel down and place prisoners in other facilities, because we only hold them for three days. And the medical costs, sometimes the medical costs can, can exceed the, the travel and stay costs, so they're at forty-three percent on that. And some years ago, yeah, you might want to have the sheriff someday come and talk about that, because that's, that's a remarkable story. When we were thinking of improving the jail facilities, do we need to go to ninety days or year round, et cetera, because of all of the costs of the travel and stays, that was, and I remember the marker at that time was, well, when we get to four, the cost of four full-time deputies, then we really have to look at going to a longer facility and making the improvements to the jail. And that's just gone the other direction. Some of it has to be, you know, what they do with courts, has to be a large part of it, that restored justice, but I don't know what else.
And drug court.
Yeah. I assume that's what it is.
And that's ideally how we wanted to invest, rather than in jail.
Yeah, you don't often get a clear result like that.
Yeah.
In your budget numbers, but, so.
Commissioner White?
And then, at some point, mental health is woefully in need of help. And with the numbers that are sent out of the county for helping our community people with their mental health needs, because we do not have residential facilities, maybe this is the time to see if we could partner with perhaps Grand Portage or Lake County, but to bring a facility that's closer to our community members and their families. I mean, this is, would be a huge, complicated discussion, but, but perhaps, based on the amount that is spent for, out of county for services, that if we had the facility we could provide, perhaps we should look at it. Yes, I said it, let's spend more money and build buildings. No, that, but I think that for, for the good of our community people, those that, families, friends, and those that have needs, we should, we should have a conversation.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, Madam Chair, to that subject, that was something that was discussed at AMC. And we need to step back and take a look at, because we're, we're failing in this area. And it, it's something that our voice needs to be lent to multiple voices, so that the response is something that is going to be a, a regional issue for us. But it, it needs to be addressed, and it certainly was a, a topic that was discussed.
Commissioner Travel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is also an item that I think we'll get information from Mr. Dave Leon, because he's very familiar with the Arrowhead region, he's already been talking with us about the mobile crisis team and some work we can do in that space. So I anticipate that we will have more information from him on what he thinks the recommendations are to make sure that we're meeting the mental health needs of our community. Some more to come.
And then a consideration, as it goes to what are the values that we have as a board and as a community. We support childcare workers, we support a lot of different services for our community members, and so it's just one more thing that we should consider when the conversation and the recommendation occurs.
Do you still want that up on the screen?
Yeah.
And again, was it the general fund budget review? Is that what it was?
Yes.
Correct. And we're on the first page of the spreadsheet.
There you go.
Yep.
Thank you, Gianna.
And I would like to add that the reason that I believe Gianna didn't do anything right away, besides the fact we never told her, but when I came, YouTube was not working anywhere, and I got word that it's up and running again now. So we're on camera, folks, so.
I feel at peace now.
So that spreadsheet's up if anybody wants to talk about it, like just the first page of it. For the O C.
Yeah, we're on two fifty currently, item two fifty.
Yeah. And I've, I've edited this, too. I might send it to you if people are interested. Environmental Health, so their revenues are low, their, that's Department 390. There's the Lake Shore Septic Compliance Funds, they're coming later in the year, that's the Rainy River One watershed money. Solid Waste, Landfill, their revenues are high, and that's fees that are already exceeding budget for the year, a lot of use down there. Planning and zoning are at fifty-one percent of revenues. Vacation rental licenses are a little lower than you'd expect at this time of year, fifty-four percent, and they've got a state grant coming later, only nineteen percent of that so far. Emergency Services Conference, they're just asking for fewer donations than they expected than the Historical Society. Typically, that would be at a hundred percent because we make a levy payment, but this is also an insurance reimbursement. This isn't going to them, but this is in the General Fund Department. We're allocating it to this department for the roof repair there. So we spent the money out of Department 501, and we're putting the money back in 501 for insurance reimbursement, which is why that looks higher. Schroder, we paid them their levy, that's a hundred percent. Same with YMCA, revenue comes once a year, comes in January, so that's a hundred percent paid. Extension's at four percent, again, because of their backpack program, they're spending down their fund balance instead of trying to collect more. And then just dropping to the miscellaneous, which is at, that's Department 822, is at ninety-one percent of the revenue, and that's because of the state and federal funds that we've already received for the year, the Pilt money. The big thing we're waiting for is the second half of the county program, it'll come in December, and get it to the hundred percent. The only other thing there is, we do have some delinquent tax revenue that comes into that department. And that's it, and.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Brady, ag inspector, do we not get a contribution from the state on that?
Not in this department. If the Highway Department does the ag inspections, they just bill us for a portion of that because it's not a Highway Department function, but they do it, and then they'll bill us.
Right. I mean, it's, it isn't real clear because the ag inspector, the fact similar to when you look at the veteran service officer, I think the state, in the past, they used to give six thousand dollars, but.
If, if they are, that's coming to the Highway Department.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is the expense, the internal expense that they're going to receive, they'll send us a bill, and we'll make a transfer to the Highway Department for the ag inspection costs.
Okay.
Years ago, they, you know, they made the case, you could hire anybody to do ag inspections, it's not a Highway Department function, but the Highway Department has always taken care of it.
And so what we did is, previously, is if the state gave us six thousand dollars, then we said, Highway Engineer, you can take this responsibility and add six thousand dollars to your payroll. That's, that's how we treated it, but if you don't see it, you don't know the revenue that's coming there. So you got to find it in the Highway Department.
Right.
Commissioner White?
Brady, I had asked that question of you, and you gave me a response to that, and for what we are paying for the environmental specialists, that the wages are eighty-six nine seventy-six, and then the benefits are twenty-eight six forty-nine.
Yeah.
But that's not from our, it's from Highway.
That's Highway, and if you talk, I'm sure Robbie has talked about that here before, it's, that's not just ag inspector, that's on all their projects. If they have environmental issues, it's, it does, ag inspecting is part of that, but it's not the job.
It's the.
It's the environmental specialist.
Specialist thing. So what?
Like working with Soil and Water on the projects up there on the bridge, and so forth.
So that's the question I need to ask.
Yeah. Yeah, we need an explanation from them.
Okay.
Any further comments or questions? Anything else, Brady?
I would just ask for a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Support. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Sure.
Passes unanimously. Thank you for all that info, for sure.
And, and the last item I have is just, this is, oh, not the last, this is the non-mandated funding history. Okay, open my file here. So this is everything I had in my files, so this starts in 2003 and goes all the way to 2026. And non-mandated refers to spending that's not mandated by law, and then that's been kind of interchanged over the years with discretionary, but this is my, my understanding of it. Discretionary refers to nonprofit organizations, I think that's how we probably mean that. And some of our non-mandated isn't nonprofit organizations, it's things like Soil and Water, which is that, which is governmental, for example. And you can go farther than that, you'll see on the top of the list, airports are not mandated, but we have one that we fund, and it's largely funded by federal and state grants. And then you also have an extension service, that's not mandated. And we have a extension department, have had for many, many decades. I don't think mandated or not, we probably have one, but the community building also, the services up there are not mandated. And this is easy to point out, certain types of functions that are pretty much all non-mandated. So, but there's parts of departments, a lot of departments, that do things that are non-mandated as services. My department does passports, it's not mandated, but no one else in the county's doing it, it seems to fit. We do revolving loan fund, we're not mandated to have a revolving loan fund and give those loans and things like that. And there are other departments doing things like that. This is a small one, but Emergency Services Conference, years ago, they got broken out from that department, and I'm not sure there's a reason for that anymore, but it's not required that we have one. The YMCA is a big number, and we have a YMCA, we're not obviously mandated to have one, but lots of people enjoy that service. Parks Department, we don't have to have a Parks Department, but we have one. We have an Economic Development Agency joined with the city, that's not mandated, it's something the county chose to do. Library, we fund half the library with a joint powers agreement with the city, and if we didn't, if we said we wouldn't have to do that, if we didn't, though, they couldn't be part of the regional library system, they'd be a local, small library, for example. We have a Housing and Redevelopment Authority, we're not required to have that. We're not required to fund Soil and Water Conservation District, although we see the benefits. Historical Society, both of them, the Cook County Historical Society and the Schroder Historical Society, so we fund all of those. So those are, you know, easy categories to pick out that are non-mandated. And then you get down to the discretionary that are now primarily in the Public Health Human Services. And in, we haven't had what's called discretionary nonprofit organizations funded by the General Fund since 2022, and when we gave money to the Art Colony. And back in 2019, the board decided that they would give this job to Public Health Human Services, the public health part of that, to look at things that we were funding discretionary, and look at it from a public health point of view, and come up with a, their own method of distributing funds. And the board gave them, said, well, last year, we funded a hundred and thirty, here, we're going to authorize you to do a hundred and thirty thousand next year, and that's how it got started. And since then, it's, the list has changed, you know, as they look at, they look at it through the eye of the Public Health Department, so, so you see what those expenditures are. And Kristin asked me this question, and she looked at it, and it's, if you took the, this levy, 2026 proposed, compared to our full levy, it's about sixteen percent. It would be, I mean, that's just a number. It would be interesting to know if you could find categories that you were comparable to go around the state and see how much other counties are spending on programs that are non-mandated, if you could find ones that were, you know, really clear. Because they're doing small things within departments like we are, too, but these big, big items, I would guess that we're pretty high in that category.
Minister of Travel?
Madam Chair, thank you. And Brady, I have asked some of my, my peers throughout the state to try to gather some of that information to see if we are, if we're in line with other counties, or to your point, if we are high. So hopefully more information soon.
Yeah, so some of that, you just, it's kind of obvious when you think about it that that we're a small county with a small city. In other places, they have large cities that do a lot of the things that we're doing, you know. So I think that's how, that's how it started.
Any further questions or comments? Well, thank you for going back all these years to 2003. Does give a perspective on definitely how things have changed with the discretionary.
Yeah.
Good perspective.
And the last item is the, the budget reduction analysis. We asked all departments to look at, what would you do if you had to, the board said, we've got to cut, we've got to cut five percent from every department, what are you going to do? So that's, that was the, it was a couple paragraphs, but that's the short version of what we asked. And so you see their responses here. I don't know if you want to hear me go through each one, or maybe you just want to ask questions?
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Brady. I don't, other than maybe for public awareness, I don't think you'd have to go through them because we have them and have read through them. I do want to say how much I really appreciate the departments doing this, and the information that is provided is a window into the process, which is, for me, it's hugely beneficial. And it gives us, I think it draws us closer to what they're tasked with in understanding the decisions that they have to made, make relative to spending taxpayer dollars. And so I'm really appreciative of that perspective that we gained by looking at their responses. I think that this coupled with the other information that we get that has been provided to us helps to inform us, so when we come to making decisions on the final budget, we have this, this perspective, so that would be my comment.
Minister of Travel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just add that going through these, as the administrator, I have significant concerns about some of the items that are listed as potential cuts and the impact that that would have on operations. However, coupled with that, I also did look through all of them and have conversations with many of our department heads, and there are a couple items that I believe we're going to move forward with, at least in, in terms of doing some additional analysis. So there are some contracts that have been in place for many, many years that need to be renegotiated. We're looking at some of our HR contracts as well in terms of some of the training that's provided, and there are some items that Plowman had mentioned within PHHS that we are moving forward with as well, such as the review of the positions, the organizational structure per, per consultants, and also looking at non-client related travel. So it was helpful in that it allows us to have opportunities about all of those items, but are, but there are several items that would be a risk for us if we did move forward with them. So I just wanted to add that as well.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to let you know, too, you know, the budget changes a little bit as we, we move on, and there have been some changes, you've heard some of them here, like how we changed the paid family leave, we had certain numbers budgeted, and now it's less. So we're saving money from what we had on September ninth. We added a little bit for the insurance, health insurance going from the ten percent we budgeted up to eleven point eight. BKV, I think we got the final bill on the Judicial Design Project, you know, over at the Law Enforcement Center that we didn't do, so that was a, that was coming out of our ARPA funds, so we don't have as much of that to use in the budget. But then we had two reductions because of a replacement in the Environmental Health Departments, the retirement of Mr. Everson, and so, and now we know the details of the replacement. And then in Human Services, Allison has adjusted some of the hours for temporary staff for, for next year, et cetera. All of that is a cut of ninety-seven thousand two hundred and twenty from what you saw on September ninth, so that would, with the use of fund balance, we showed then, we'd, our levy increase would be six point seven nine if we did nothing else other than approve what's sitting in the budget right now. And it was seven point five seven. But you could leave it at seven point five seven and just use less fund balance, of course, all those options are going to come up. All those options are going to come up.
Commissioner Gammel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I would, I would just restate that I really appreciate the work that's gone into understanding our stewardship responsibility financially. As things change, being mindful of that and making the board aware, that's, that's hugely beneficial. Your comments and opportunities to reassess. And when, when money is flush, we tend to bypass that discipline. But when things are tight, I think that's where stewardship responsibility and working at it, mindful of what we don't want to lose. But that is something that elected officials make a decision on based upon what they feel the constituents feel is valued to them. So I, I just want to say that this, this process is good, and I think pulling it all together as we move for, to setting that date is an important thing that we need to do now.
I think over the years, I don't really feel we've been flush. You know, I think we've struggled in my time, every time, and having to set levies at a percentage that was not really wanting to do that, but we had to. I think this year, we are a little better off because we have some general fund money and we had some ARPA money and we had all of that money that last couple of years we've been able to utilize. But it's, it's a struggle every, every levy. And when you sit in these seats, it's especially daunting because of the decisions that we have to make according to the paperwork that Brady provides and taking care of the, our people is basically what we do. And so I'm hoping that the government will make some decisions and help with SNAP, for one thing, you know? So that's just working also with our budgeting and then working with what the state is doing and then what the feds are offering. So it's daunting, but we can do it.
Anything else, Brady?
Well, I would, just like, I hope if you have any other thoughts, you know, as we get to December, of information that would help you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
And I would like the public with their concerns or any questions they have, you can send them to your commissioners who will, I'm sure, direct them to Brady. Because the more eyes and the more experiences out there that can question or add to the decision-making, the better. Ultimately, it's the five, ultimately, it's the five of us up here who make that decision, but I, as one, really want to know. And it's not, and so you understand that we're probably going to not make you happy. We know that, so.
Okay, thank you, Brady, for all the information. At this time, we'll move on to the Administrator Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first thing I want to mention is I did get a message from Robbie about the AIG Inspector position, and it seems like there is additional information that we can add about that position as we move forward. It sounds like there's a little more funding that is received, and he's got a lot more details about how that position is leveraged. So I would like to bring that forward to the board at some point, just to make sure that we've got all the facts clear on that position, so we can, we can add that to a future agenda. I wanted to mention SNAP, of course. That has been a high priority for us, and things have been changing almost daily. We receive information every afternoon from DCYF, so they've been providing daily updates. We did not receive one yesterday because of the holiday. And so the last one I received was on Monday. And at that time, they said, full November benefits have been issued to all Minnesotans who are eligible as of Friday, November 7th. They will also continue to accept the daily benefit issuance files, which include newly eligible applicants. So that's the most recent information that we have. So all of our community members that are eligible should have received a payment on Friday. So we continue to monitor that, and we will continue to communicate with the community if, if and when things change. The next item I have is related to our, our capital improvement projects. The Law Enforcement Center is moving along very nicely. I don't know if you've driven by, but things continue to progress. All of the footings will be inspected tomorrow by the State Building Inspector. Footings will be poured most likely early next week, and we're on schedule to receive the precast panels in early December. So that'll be fun to see that, that happen. The transfer station, the precast panels are scheduled to be completed this week. We did have one small hiccup when one of the largest panels broke during the install last Thursday, but the contractor was able to respond very quickly and replace the panel to, get the panel to us, and we're planning on replacing it today. So, so that's been, that's been fun to see as well. So everything is going really well with the projects. And the, the last item I have is just curious about future discussions around the budget. We have a Committee of the Whole next week. We have two potential agenda items on that agenda, so we can absolutely add the budget as an opportunity to kind of dig into the information that Brady's been providing everyone, if that's helpful to you.
Yes.
And if it goes long, I mean, can we have it so we have the room for into the afternoon? We could break for lunch and come back if need be? Or, you know, just so that we can finish, finish the conversation totally?
I believe we could.
Maybe. I do know, I would have to check with Kim Shepard and Court Admin because I tend to have this room reserved starting at 1:00, if, I'm assuming if they have a jury trial.
Okay.
Well, I could check with her and see if that's still planned or not.
The other thing is, are the two items pressing? Could they be postponed?
One is the vacation rental program, so I don't, we need to do that. Do we need to do that? Okay. And then the next is the SGSDs, which I know we're on a timeline for that one as well. So, and I, I don't know with live streaming if, I believe the ITV room is not, not usable for...
I haven't done it, but I think Patrick from the city.
Okay. We'll look into options and, and check in with Court Administration and then also see if there's any way we could move over to the ITV room, if possible.
Another option would be the city, if you want to check and see availability of the city. Just, just throwing it out when you're looking at everything and...
With the budget meeting part?
Yeah, well, just if, if we, we have a conflict because of scheduling in a room, if the city's available, I'm sure that they would certainly make it available to us to use their conference room.
The other thing to, to remember is the Personnel Committee at 1:00 that day, you know? If we want to, if, you know, if we want late, if we'd want to cancel that or just some people not attend?
Yeah, we could potentially move that if we needed the space, if that's the only room available, but...
And that meeting can be held virtually, so that would be another option, although commissioners would not be able to attend.
And I, for, and I, for one, am not opposed to having some sort of another day special meeting. I mean, I'd rather have our special meetings with the drumbeat of the levy deadline looming farther out than right, right up against it. So I'm, whatever, you know? I think this takes precedence.
So I think I'm hearing that the preference would be to extend it on Tuesday if possible, and if not, set a special meeting? Is that what?
I would agree. And, Madam Chair, and to that point, that if, if the items on the agenda that, for the Committee of the Whole are something in the scheduling, we, this is important, so we don't want to push through on it, that if we set up a special, set aside just that, I'd be comfortable with doing that and then allow the time that's allocated and not have to move so many pieces for the Committee of the Whole.
All right, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move on to a Commission Report, meeting updates. Anybody have anything they'd like to share? Commissioner Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a Firewise meeting, and one of the things I want to report is that the small burn piles along the Gunflint Trail have done quite nicely. There were burns scheduled up by Bear Skin and Squint Lake, and everything went just beautifully. Everything was damp, it was, the conditions were perfect. Piles a lot smaller than last year, so not as much worry, although when personnel leave at night, I think the tension and the anxiety of people living there and our resorts increases, but it was handled very well. Then we had our Fall Gala last week, or actually, two weeks ago now. Over 260 people were in attendance, and I had the pleasure of, in honor of sitting with a Reservation Tribal Council, as did Representative Scraba. We had some really good conversations. So that was a great event to participate in. We had our Spruce Bud Symposium a week ago last Saturday. 60 individuals attending there, and we had classroom sessions in the morning. Afternoon was a bus tour up the Gunflint Trail and to look at different kinds of applications and work that was done on a larger property. And I really want to give a big shout out to Extension and our Soil and Water Conservation District and Firewise staff for doing a great job of collaborating on that. It was amazing. Guntrick, Gunflint Trail Scenic Byway met last Tuesday, and they were just very excited about the opening of the grade now that there is an opportunity to have another emergency evacuation route out of the county. And we gave them an update on the Mill to Hill project. If you haven't been up the Gunflint in the last few days, it's striped, the guardrails are going in, and the new bridge is being used. The temporary bridge is in the process of being deconstructed, and we're right along with our timelines. It's just happened really well, and I want to give a big shout out to our Highway Department for the incredible work they've done, the planning, and just strategically knowing when to work on a Saturday to make sure we meet our schedule, knowing that winter weather is coming, and we have to get that asphalt laid and the striping done while it's warm. So they've done a superb job. We had an AMC Solid Waste Committee meeting last week, a couple of hours, and we had solid waste directors and environmental administrators from around the state of Minnesota speak for about two hours. There are some concerns that were expressed about the interaction between a lot of counties and the MPCA. And so it was kind of interesting to listen to those concerns. They were primarily farming communities that were struggling with issues with the MPCA. But I did want to bring that up, and there'll be a lot of work that we have to do in December at our AMC Policy Committee meeting to determine how we're going to move forward with legislation and legislative priorities for the upcoming year. We had our Legislative Luncheon last week, and I'll let Commissioner Storey talk a little bit about that, but that was a nice event. Want to thank Brooke Lassard and our County Attorney's Office and our Veteran Service Officer for helping with Operation Green Light to honor our veterans. And the green lights have been showing in the courthouse throughout the last week, and just really appreciate the work they did and good support for veterans that was demonstrated yesterday at a variety of activities and events throughout the county. And with that, I believe that is it. And I look forward to listening to commissioners share what they have with their meetings. This is the only time we have a chance to get together and hear about what's going on at meetings. And so I would really encourage people to talk about those meetings that they attend so that we are all well informed as well as the public. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Gammel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Attended Northern Counties Coalition meeting. It was a conflict with the luncheon. I was doing a presentation at that meeting, so I, I needed to attend that. But for the community, Northern Counties Coalition used to be formerly Northern Counties Coordinating, yeah, Long End Club, they called it, but they've shortened it now to Northern Counties Coalition Board. And they began 1983 as a Joint Powers Board, and the purpose of Northern Counties Coalition is to provide a local government perspective regarding regulation, implementation and coordination of environmental and natural resource policies with our state and federal partners. We have added four additional counties to the original 10 counties. The original 10 counties are Aiken County, Cook, Itasca, Koochiching, Lake, Lake of the Woods, Marshall, Pennington, Roseau, St. Louis, and the new four additional members, Carlton, Cass, Otter Tail, and Pine Counties. It was noted in our discussion that politics will likely be the primary focuses of the next legislative session, and we were advised not to look for anything other than the supplemental budget and perhaps a million-dollar bonding bill. Members of the Coalition met with the DNR as a part of a legislative audit that reviewed the DNR's land acquisitions. It was requested that the DNR provide an outline, online outline summary report that would be better understood by users. The DNR appreciated the feedback that, and they expressed a willingness to try to update their antiquated system. It was also expressed by members of Northern Counties that we have a very vested interest in understanding who owns what when it comes to land use. And it was noted that the DNR presently does not include school trust lands amongst their listings. So from our standpoint in making decisions about land use, that in meeting with the DNR, and again, this was precipitated by a requirement that the DNR do an audit, and so we were able to communicate with the DNR that, for us, it'd be helpful to see all of the land the DNR manages, and when there's a change in that transaction, to be, have that reflected on an easily accessible online platform. The other thing is that if you have a zero net gain policy as a county, that if the DNR is purchasing property and there's land exchanges, we need to know how that plays out. So if, if they're selling or they're purchasing so that we, we aren't losing our tax base with property transactions. So it's always a very substantive discussion, and in my previous term, being a member of Northern Counties Coalition Board, I always look forward to attending because they definitely roll up their sleeves and do good work.
This past Monday, because of the holiday, we had a township meeting in Schroeder, and Administrator Treble and Plowman joined us on Zoom, and we had a good discussion in regards to their questions about what had transpired with the situation with public health. And I think they asked good questions, and the description of what really happened was very descriptive, and I think Plowman did a great job in covering the history on that. And there was no further questions after, because I stayed after them to give my report. There weren't any other questions. So I think they're, they're pleased with understanding what had been going on in the last four months. So that was, and I thank you for also joining us too on Zoom. Yes, at Charlie's, we had a great gathering. We had Senator Haushild and Representative Scraba and a representative from IRR. Eda was not able to make it, so we had a representative there. First of all, the question to the Senator and Representative was, how do you think things are, how do you think things are going to happen next year in the legislature? And not real encouraging words, but, you know, they, they do their best to represent us, and they listen very closely to all of the requests that came up. And Administrator Treble and I addressed some of the questions that we had, that we put together, and they had some response to that. So, and Charlie's was a great place. We had a buffet lunch. And so it is, for the future, a great place in the West End to hold different functions. So that was, that was a success, I would say. I had to leave a little bit early, but I assume as it went on, it was. I had to leave a little bit early, but I assume as it went on, it was, you know, good, good response to the requests. There was probably about 11 requests from different departments. One of them was the Getchigami Trail, and I serve on that committee. And Tofti Park Road is really good now. We're ready for the Fourth of July. They're just wrapping up some little edging work, but that's great. And the bike trail was pretty much completed. They put the walkway right in front of the museum, and then they have two chart, chartreuse signs saying pedestrian crossing with the white lines. So let's hope that that is enough. I know that my time that I spend at the museum is, you know, I'm not slowing a lot of traffic down, but let's hope, you know, that those work. If not, I think we will request a light, just to give everybody, you know, like we do in Bootson, just that heads up of, oh, there's something blinking, I need to be cautious when I come into town.
There's something red and blue blinking.
Yeah.
Yeah. More eye catching.
And then I attended the NACO meeting, and there's a lot to discuss right now, which I'll bring forth at our Public Health meeting. Okay, Commissioner Gallow?
Yeah, I just, I just want to comment to the meeting and the response on, on the part of county to Schroeder. And I, I think that's just, just a great thing. When the community has a question, especially townships, but anybody, to be able to respond in a way like that, to be forthcoming and transparent. And I found in the discussion that we had in Budget and Facilities, when Plowman was there, it was like, this puts things in context and perspective. And, and the, the benefit of sharing those things and being open in that regard is that community can come alongside and help us understand how we can address these things, and there's a shared sense of ownership in that regard. So I just think it's a really healthy thing, and, and appreciated the response. The more, the more that we can do that substantively and genuinely, the more that we build that relationship that we're looking to do. So it's not just words, it's actions, so I just want to say kudos.
Yes, thank you. Any other reports? Commissioner White?
Yes, I, I too attended the Legislative Luncheon, and I really liked that format with, with the organizations and the representatives sitting at the front, and everyone is an audience to hear, sitting comfortably, to hear what's being requested, to hear the interactions. And then, and it was, it was well timed. I also had to leave early, but it was, I really liked that, I really liked that format.
We can thank Viset Kokoni and Linda working together with us.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Linda, and whomever, Angel, whomever put that together. I attended the, it's a long acronym, the Northern Emergency Management Assistance Compact. That is a international, national group that focuses on reacting to emergencies and coordinating. And, and we got a big conversation for the, I stayed for more than half the meeting. It was coming from Montreal, Manitoba, Manitoba, sorry. And they did a mock nuclear emergency. Like, oh, that's one, like, honestly, I didn't think about having a nuclear emergency, it's always fire. So anyway, I attended that, and that was another part of the web of protection that communities and countries put together for their citizens, and that was pretty good. But from there, I got to go to the Tribal Relations Conference up in Grand Portage, the state, for their state employees, and I asked Vice, Vice Chair, I don't mean to leave you out. I asked Vice Chair Agatha Armstrong if I could attend, and, and they had room. And it again, I highly, highly recommend that everybody that works in this organization, particularly in our Public Health and Human Services, and for those of us on this board and those department heads who have any interactions with, working with Grand Portage Nation, that we get, we do that. I mean, it is eye opening, and, and what I thought was particularly, I mean, there's a lot of dates and times and treaties and broken treaties, but the one thing that I observed really caught people's attention when they did the presentation on boarding schools. And this time around, I'd seen this movie before, it just, people were tearing up, it just, because there are like three and four-year-olds and all these, and. So anyway, all of that is important information that I really recommend that city, county, everybody should, should offer that up, yes.
Commissioner, you'll be happy to know that I have a meeting at 11 o'clock today with the Tribal Training Institute to try to see if we can bring some of that training to our staff.
And understand that the participants were fed, those that attended. So just keep that in mind, so. Yeah, I think those were the big ones. Well, well, wait, and then it was the Council on Aging. And we have to have a strong conversation with getting some funding help. They, they ended the month again $18,000 behind, having to draw for a second month from funds that they have for this situation. And a lot of it was because this is a time of year that insurance premiums are due and different large, large expenses fall upon them. So it's not that their numbers are not up, and the, the auxiliary, the veterans, they have just a lot of people coming, and I know that there are people, or veterans coming down from Grand Portage for the meals also. So it was a really positive idea.
And just to put a plug in for the public, anybody who is a veteran can go for lunch any day of the month of November, Monday through Friday, and they can get frozen meals to take home as well. So you just come in, you have to call ahead of time, and then you come in, sign your name, what branch of service you were in, and you get your meal.
And I would add that if you, they do have additional meals frozen, so that's always an option if it's the end of the day and you're really hungry. And, but, well, it's $4.50, but if you're a veteran, it's free this month, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I just have three probably I'll report on. First one is the Northwoods Food Project, going through some reviews of where dollars are and the grants. The farmer's market was extended, and I guess the last two farmer's markets, which were part of the extension, were the busiest that vendors had seen. So it bodes well for the future. And there was some funding from the Margaret A. Cargill Foundation, I guess, to extend that and to provide more of those tokens. And there's more funding to try to build it stronger for next year. So they're in a very unique situation and place, and there'll be some strategic planning happening in the, in the start of the new year. Also had a HR Committee meeting with the EDA. We've, we're working with North Shore Development Company, which is Jason Hale and Teresa Bida, to help in the search for, for a new Executive Director and maybe take a little different tack on that. We'll have more conversations with the full board. But it's very encouraging, and it's just a very fortunate place to have the North Shore Development Company willing to support the EDA through this, and just their expertise is phenomenal, so feel really good about that. And then also the Duluth Y Board, which is, will no longer be called the Duluth Area YMCA. It will be the Lake Superior YMCA because of the merger with the Superior Y in Wisconsin. And so that's been a huge project they've been working on for quite a while, two years, I want to say, and it wasn't a merger initially. Initially, it was just a management contract because the Superior Y was struggling, and now they're, they're in the black. And, and it's really impressive to see that turnaround and just the collaboration there. And it's Sarah Cole, she's the CEO, it's, it was her eight-year anniversary, and just the changes that have happened within the organization, I think is pretty, pretty remarkable since her, her hiring. So that's probably all, all to report on today. Oh, no, sorry. Labor Management Committee, we, we met, it had been a while, and it was Kristen's first meeting there. And so that was really good, just to kind of get, get connected with that group and kind of talk about some of the things that we've accomplished, some of the things we've been working on and hope to, to move on, and just to really establish or reestablish or continue those relationships. It's pretty critical for, for our organization. And because of that, I missed the Food Access Council, which is unfortunate because of just where things are at with food in, in our country and county right now. But I think that's all.
Commissioner Gallow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Mills, the YMCA merger, and then you made the comment that they're in the black, do you know, do you know what contributed to that? In other words, can you give us, sort of connect those dots between Superior and Duluth YMCA, and now they find themselves in the black?
The operations, 100%, just streamlining and professionalism.
Merging, merging in the operations?
In Superior's operations. They were really struggling, and they were in the red. They have deferred maintenance, and that's still something they have to address. But just having that professional work culture and systems in place and structure is the, the long and short of it. Personnel is a huge cost, and so really dialing that in. And, yeah, it, I, I know there's a lot of history there, and, and I'm not privy to all of that, but they've had some, Superior's had some significant challenges, and, and it wasn't apparent to the board. And then when it became apparent to the board, it was beyond management. So, so then that's where that management contract came into play. But, yeah, it's, I don't know if you're aware, but the Masabi Y shut down with similar issues, I guess. And the, the Duluth now, Lake Superior Y, has been trying to support and, and offer services now that the Masabi Y is gone. And there is talks with, oh, and I missed the name of it because the sound blipped off, but there is talks with another city that might be heading to have a YMCA there. And so trying to work with the Lake Superior YMCA to, to figure out how that could or could not work. But the city is the one initiating that, and, yeah, it can be daunting because, you know, when you get so big, it's a lot harder to manage, right? Sometimes can be a lot more expensive to manage, but with the systems in place at the, at the Lake Superior YMCA, it seems like it's just more and more good happening, and getting national attention too. They've received, well, Sarah's received national awards, but the Duluth, or the Lake Superior area YMCA received funding from Mackenzie Scott, philanthropic, and, and just because of the work that they've done and just kind of stood out to her, which is a huge boon for the city of Duluth, but then also the region, so. I mean, and if you, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just to say, I appreciate that because, I mean, just connecting the dots and understanding how you got there, and, and the willingness to address issues and to see them and, and understand them so that you can respond in a way, and that it just, it's just a good.
Oh, it's a.
It's a good learning story, like, you, you want to learn, learn from those things, so that, I appreciate, appreciate that.
Yeah, it's, there's always lots to learn there, and just all the connections and the interworkings with all of the organizations in Duluth as well. It's, it's very impressive. Where I was going to go though with some unfortunate news, or fortunate, is Alex, our local director, is, is leaving. So sad, but happy for him. And, yeah, we'll go through that transition, and he loved the area, it's just that his, his partner is elsewhere, and so he's moving close, closer there.
Yeah, just encourage him, I mean, when you look at your priorities, I respect his.
Yeah.
His focusing on his priorities, and he, he did what he did, and, you know, not being, being more selfless in that regard. But at some point in life, you got to realize time is passing, so it's, it's important, so.
Yeah.
I had another question, thank you. When you were talking about the meals with AOA, AOA had sent a, a follow-up asking if we were going to make a contribution towards their building plan, and I'm just wondering where that sets, if that's something that is a discussion item in our budget process? Or where we're at on that? Do you understand? Yeah, I mean, when they, he came before us in a Committee of the Whole, and then there was a follow-up, and I, I just, I don't know where that's at, so.
Ray, do you know?
Well, I mean, no, I've not heard.
It's not in our budget.
No.
And so if we want to put it in our budget, we can, but I think that's as far as the conversation has gone, is what you're just referring to.
Yeah, well, and I, and I just, so if, there should be a response with, you know, where our position is at and where we're on there, because obviously the benefit that they are to us, we don't want to ignore that. So if, if our position unfortunately is da-da-da, understandably, then at least we, we want a response that the partnership is, is affirmed.
We can look into that.
Yeah.
Okay, so thank you for all the updating. We keep on learning about what's going on in the county that way. So we'll move on then to the, we, in our packet, we have the lodging tax comparison through August, and then we have recognition of November staff anniversaries. Christopher, Christopher Fenstedt and Recycling Center, one year. Stephanie Radloff, Recorder's Office, one year. Ally Iverson, Sheriff's Office, three years. Nancy Demming, Public Health and Human Services, three years. Angelique Horman, Sheriff's Office, four years. Ben Hadley, Highway Department, six years. Grace Gernogar, Public Health and Human Services, seven years. Jimmy Wallner, Maintenance, 11 years. Jesse Backstrom, Highway Department, 12 years. Norris Kleckstedt, Highway Department, 12 years. And Anniversary Milestone is Steve Olson, Highway Department, five years. There be no other business, we are adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Before you leave.
Excuse me.
Before you leave, I, when was the YMCA meeting? Because I.
Yesterday.